This is the Lincoln County Commission Regular Session Meeting on January 17th, 2019, at 6:00 PM. Members present are Darrell Baker, the former Lieutenant of Charleston, and Lois Showers. The first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of our last regular session, which was held on January 3rd, 2019. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of my last meeting?
Second.
You have a motion in a second? All in favor of I?
Aye.
Okay, so we have nothing under public comment.
Well, Jay Johnson's signed, but he's just attending. Nobody's signed for public comment.
Okay, under discussion of concerns and possible action, the first two things are regarding the Hamlin Volunteer Fire Department. The first item is to pay Gray, Griffith, and May.
Oh, my God.
This is an accounting firm that is working on the audits. And the second item is the fire truck payment in the amount of $14,126.99 to City National Bank. And we've done this in the past, Josh, it appears itself, but you know, what we'll do here. This is all of the levy money we're holding for them. So we'll make the check to the accounting firm and to City National, and we'll mail it straight to them. Actually, Mary, you probably can deliver the check to City National for the fire truck payment, so.
The money for the audit comes from?
The levy money, right. It is $12,000.
You want us to do seven?
That's $12,000.
For the audits.
I'm motioning for him to pay the audit.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to pay the audit for the Hamlin Volunteer Fire Department. Do you have a second?
Sure.
Second, all in favor of I? Okay, do I have a motion to make the fire truck payment in the amount of $14,126.99 to City National Bank for the Hamlin Volunteer Fire Department?
Second.
You have a motion?
Sorry.
Motion, second, all in favor of I? I'll have, I think we could probably get the check together tomorrow. Cheryl won't be here Monday. Monday, we'll get the checks written and get them sent out.
We'll get them tomorrow if we have it.
Oh, Monday, we're close. Do you think you can get it tomorrow? Oh, okay, there we go, okay.
We'll get them tomorrow or Tuesday.
Okay, then Mary can run it down. All right. Okay, the next item is the dates for this year's Board of Equalization. These are kind of set, especially the one on the 15th, the mineral day hearing, this date sets that. Right now, I don't think we have any hearings, do we, Mary?
No, not yet. We just published, so we'll start getting calls from them.
Okay, but the dates we have set are February 1st, February 5th, February 8th, 12th, and then the mineral days of 15th. In the past, we've done these hearings at 9:00 in the morning. Is that all right? Not bound with you, Doc?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll just, if we don't have any hearings, you know, we'll do it like we've done in the past, and we can just do it by phone, open, and then reset until the next year, and we don't close them, but, okay, so that's that. Okay, so under unfinished business, this was, you know, we talked about the public nuisance ordinance at our last meeting, and so we've had two weeks that it's been out to the public. We've had nobody, nobody's here tonight to address it. We've not had anybody call or send anything in in regard to the ordinance, so, you know, at this time, I think that we would be able to vote.
Really going to have a dime in there?
To vote to abolish the nuisance ordinance. So, do I have a motion?
I move that we repeal the nuisance ordinance that was passed in March of 2017.
I'll second that.
Okay, so I have a motion in a second, all in favor of I? Okay, under new business.
Just real quick, we established an order. Just, I'm very, maybe make note too, that we need to put something in that book as well as the initial meeting minutes, how you copy the order that abolishes it, and then I'll make a note on that order, this particular ordinance that it had, that it had been abolished.
Okay. I think that's all we'll have to do.
Because we have a separate ordinance book now, and I know when that was all along, we were talking about creating one, this got a couple ordinances in it, but if somebody wants to look in that book and think that was ordinance, you know, some of those will have to refer that it's been abolished, you know, in that book. I thought I'd just make a note in the index.
Was a motion to repeal it, I mean, is that what your motion was?
Motion was to repeal.
Yeah, yeah, that's the best word you can use, I think, because that takes care of it without getting into, because the statement I made before about the state code, we basically, that was made according to the state codes, you know, a lot of it was, it was extended somewhat, but I think repeal would be, it accomplishes the same thing we could be, plus it allows us to refer back to the state.
Okay, we use that line with your view.
And then we'll do, Mary, get the order together, we'll sign the order, and then you just sort of copy the order in there also. I think that'll, all right. All right. Okay, do you all have any questions about the new business?
Is there any, like, public accounting of the $389,000 to pay attorney fees and property owners? Is there any, will there be any list of who's getting that money?
We have Alan here tonight.
Okay, yeah.
He didn't sign his speech, but since it's on here, he can address how this is. We haven't really got into a lot of this in the past at the meeting, so Alan, if you just want to kind of give a rundown, maybe start with how this was selected through FEMA with the list of people they checked in.
Okay. I didn't actually hear your question, Sean, so.
Just, is there, will there be a list of the, who's getting the $389,000 in?
We can provide that to you if you'd like.
Is it public information?
Sure, I don't see why, I don't see why it wouldn't be at this point.
Would you do that? Because, I mean, it's not final until they sign.
That's correct.
So, just because, I guess you could say they've been approved, but they're not, it's not really official until they close on it.
Okay.
To recap the whole situation, after the 2016 flood, FEMA set aside a certain percentage of money that could be used for mitigation projects. Basically, how can we prevent future flooding? And the best way in those areas was to buy the structures. I mean, we couldn't build a dam, we couldn't, we couldn't do any, we couldn't build a flood wall, so the only way to mitigate future damage was to buy the people out and relocate them. We had the meeting there at Duval. Duval probably had 60, 70 people showed up, couldn't hardly get in the door, and we started to take applications. We divided the applications up into six or seven different projects based upon where they were located in the community, and we sent some priorities in there. And FEMA, everybody that asked to be included, if they had been flooded, if they met the criteria, we submitted an application on their behalf. And this included flooding that occurred in Clendenham, flooding that occurred in Greenbrier County, all of that was out of a big pot of money of many millions of dollars. So FEMA approved one of our projects, it wasn't necessarily the project that we had at our highest priority, but it met their criteria based upon a benefit cost analysis, based upon the value of the structures, based upon how many times they've been flooded in the past, and how much it would cost to mitigate the people from future damage. So, the first group that was approved was four structures, I think it's five pieces of property total, and it's about 500, it's a little over $500,000. So the first part of the money that we've asked for, we asked for a drawdown a few weeks ago for attorney fees and fees for doing title searches, everybody's title came back clean. Now we're asking for the money to actually purchase the property. Once we send that letter to Charleston, they will create a letter of credit which the commission will sign, and then that money will be dispersed to the attorney that is handling this for us, Mr. Alford, and then Mr. Alford will handle the closing and payment of the property owners. Once that's done, the county will take possession of the property, and they will tear the property down and reclaim it back to the ground, you know, and grass or whatever. One thing that, you know, one thing that is in there, and I'll have people ask, well, you know, there's perfectly good things that you might want to save or keep out of those structures. One of the things that it does allow us to do, that if a contractor bids on the project, he could say, "Well, I'd like to keep the house," or "I'd like to keep the doors and the windows out of the house, and I'll reduce the cost of demolition and removing it based upon the cost of what I'm going to take out of it." So there's, there is some benefit given if that person that's going to do the demolition wants to take some of what's physically there. I understand that there are other projects that are still on the approval desk. This is not a short project because there's plenty of, plenty of other structures that are going to qualify, and we're continuing to supply information on a weekly basis on some of the other structures. So I think that this is just the beginning, and there will be several more approved, but for the purposes of us being able to manage it, for the purposes of being able to fix a specific area or community, it was divided into projects. So, I can provide you the name, the people, the people that, the people that are affected have been notified, so if you haven't been notified yet, then you're not in this first group.
How many are there?
There's a total of four structures, five pieces of property.
Okay, so how many owners?
Yeah, some of it, some of it has joint ownership, so I think five.
Okay, and y'all, it's, this is y'all, okay?
Yes, sir.
No, no Hamlin yet?
No.
Okay.
No.
Thank you, sir.
And all this is just, I mean, it's just basically to give her permission to sign. We're going to manage the money, are we, is that basically?
This is giving her permission to ask for the money.
Okay.
And then once she asks for the money, then they will send the county a letter of credit. And we're asking her to have permission to sign that letter of credit when it comes in, and then at that point, it will go back to Washington when the government reopens, and that's where we've met, you know, that is going to stop us at that point. And then that money will actually be given to the county, and the county will pay the attorney the full amount. There's an invoice that shows his entire cost, which includes his closing costs and his deed preparation fees and the cost necessary to pay these people for the property. At no point is anybody at this point bound by any legal obligation. The people that are being considered have up in the very last minute, when they go to closing, to say, "I've changed my mind," or "I don't want to do this," or "I've had a change of heart." So this is completely voluntary, we're not forcing anybody to do anything, we're attempting to help people that otherwise would never be able to sell their home, will never be able to get a loan on their home because it's in the flood plain, and will never want to do any huge improvements because they've all been flooded in the past, so.
And we're not incurring any type of liability in the commission itself for any funding or anything?
The commission incurs absolutely no liability, no funding requirement. The only thing that we do in the deed, there's a clause in the deed that once the property is turned over to the county, it will become county property, that it can't be used for anything except, I think, grazing of animals and open pasture land or whatever. It's, part of the idea is to get the structures that are in the floodway out so the stream's going to flow better. So that's the only requirement, you can't go in and build something on it, you can't put a park on it, you can't put a county building. It's restricted in the deed from ever being used for anything else because it physically is in the flood plain.
Well, you could put like a green space park with benches or?
As long as it doesn't impede on the floodway. I mean, you can't put any buildings, you couldn't put any physical constructed, constructed facilities. The county did this once before, it's probably been 15 years ago, but some of the, most of the structures were over in the Griffithsville area, especially around, there was a couple bought right there across from what was Griffithsville Elementary, you could, there's a couple of open lots there, those were bought by the county before, and there were some up around Sweetland that were bought. I think maybe there were about 10 or 12 homes that at that time.
Was it only five?
You know, one of the questions, one of the things I wanted to bring up is, you know, I was around when that happened, but, you know, the structures that were flooded prior, it's my understanding, because there was a question came out of the table, the structures were moved and put up and set up for rent and things like that in other areas. And there was some problems with the Health Department approving them and things of that nature, not wanting to get any approval whatsoever on the relocation and setting them up and things. And I know that there were some people kind of questioned afterwards, the uses of structures that had been flooded prior, you know, like we're talking about the contractors taking the windows out, but these were actually, the structures were actually moved over on the river and set up and things of that nature. And because they were, weren't healthy structures anyway, somehow, there wasn't permission gotten from the Health Department or something, but we want to make sure that there's, and this is just a, just a caution thing.
Good point, good point. And I had that brought to my attention before, and I think some people maybe thought that something had been done at the time that was maybe a little shady, but after looking at the way the project works, you know, if we put out for bid that we have five structures that we want to tear down, or four structures in this case that we tear down, then we accept proposals from any excavation company or any demolition company, and they come in and say, "I'm going to take them down for you for $1,000 as long as I get what's there." And that's a possibility, that could easily be done, but the money's there to fully demolish them. And I think that we do have the wherewithal or the authority to say that when we bid this out, that this structure cannot be relocated unless it is declared safe by the Health Department, the State Fire Marshal's Office, and we may be able to go as far as to saying that the structure cannot be used somewhere else in the county because of its previous flooding and contamination.
Because I think that was the problem, it wasn't anything that we did wrong, other than the fact the Health Department didn't approve the relocation, I mean, didn't approve the structures we lived in afterwards and things, or at least that's what was brought up to me, was the fact that they were moved and rented out and things of that nature without having any kind of approval. In fact, I don't even think there was any building permits or anything at that time, you know, so it was kind of a, I just didn't want us to get into a situation where.
Well, I can assure you that before we put it out to bid, I'll let you look over it so we can, so we can make sure we don't, because that's a good idea.
Because, you know, I just want to make sure, because I know that was a problem, a contention, a point of contention before, and having lived through it again, I just want to make sure that we make sure we dot our i's across our t's and make sure everybody, because I don't, I mean, I'm all for if a structure's safe and healthy, that if somebody wanted to use it, I got no problem with it, but I just want to make sure that we follow all of our building and health permits and things like that, and if they aren't, anything else.
Sometimes with rental property, you can slap some new paint on the wall and make it look really nice, and then you get in there and realize it's been flooded and there's mold and all kinds of other problems that might not be easily said.
And I think that's what happened.
So, quite frankly, I would prefer, you know, there's one, one structure of all these that's in fairly good shape, but I would prefer that the structures not get moved and relocated unless there's a really, really good reason and we can make 100% sure, because most of those structures that were in this mitigation project are not in the best of shape. Some of those people in Griffithsville have been flooded twice within the same month. So let's face it, if we can let them find a new place to live or build a new place and get those structures out of our community, then the communities are going to be better off, and the people that live there are going to be better off. But I'm glad you brought that up.
Alan, also, before structures?
Yes.
If the people get down as this thing goes along and decide they're not interested, the money will go back to FEMA, correct?
The money won't, the money won't necessarily go back to FEMA, but the money will go back to the state, and the state will have to tell us how to spend it. FEMA, FEMA doesn't necessarily hold the money like you might think they do. FEMA dedicated a percentage of the total amount damaged during that 2016 flood for mitigation, so it would go back into the mitigation pot for West Virginia. And we might get it for another project in West Virginia, or there might be a project in Upper Canal Valley, or Canal County near Clendenham, or Greenbrier County that also was flooded, that they might think was more receiving of that money, so.
If we have to send $200,000 to say back to the state flood mitigation program?
Yes.
There's no guarantee that we would get it back?
There's no guarantee that we'd get it back, no, there's not. And you, the total grant is for about $550,000, and that sounds like a lot compared to what we're asking for tonight, but that includes all the legal fees, that includes that the minute the county takes possession of it, we have to have it tested for asbestos. And if it tests positive for asbestos, then there's money in there to have the asbestos abated so that we don't violate any environmental laws, and then to have it properly torn down, disposed of, and the ground reclaimed. So in some cases, that's 20 to 25% of the total project is the demolition and the reclaiming of the property.
So the commission, or the county, the cost of tearing it down once it becomes county property is included?
Yes, it's included in the total grant.
And I'm, I'm sorry for being so poorly briefed on this, I just, I haven't kept up with it, but, okay.
There's not a single cent of expense to the county for this.
Okay.
And the time that my office has involved in it, and my staff is involved in it, we have the ability to ask for reimbursement for the time, and we're keeping track of the time that's spent so that we can ask for reimbursement out of that money for secretarial expenses, copying expenses, all of the, just like with any other grant, there's usually a 2% or 3% fee that's associated with the grant for management of the grant. And that's in this case, too.
Thank you.
I have a final question.
Sure.
So what's your, the only thing that's currently be out of, be out of, be a tax base later on?
Yes.
And we'll be out of nothing else?
Nothing else. In fact, we did some numbers, and the majority of the people that applied for this were a large portion of them were on homestead exemption, a large portion, a large portion of the property had very, very loyal taxation begin with, the cause of the condition they were in. And I, and we actually went to the assessor's office, and we went to those offices, and we looked, and we were looking at, that all 50 projects were approved in the county, it was like $2,000 in taxes over the course of the whole year that we were talking about. Very, very minimal effect of the tax base in the county, but the issue that was brought up to us with FEMA was that you take a $500,000 house, beautiful here, and their house next door to it that's worth $5,000 that's flooded all the time, it's devalued, that house. So as you remove those structures throughout the county that have constantly been flooded and have fallen apart, then it will increase the value of the other structures around it because they will become more marketable, more valuable.
Tax question come out.
Yes, so there's benefits to it.
I guess, well, I didn't understand, Fig asked that question about the refund of $200,000, I guess I didn't understand that.
I think the question was that if there's 500, 500 and some thousand dollars appropriated for these five lots, four structures, the people are not bound until that day they walk into the attorney's office and sign their closing. They can buy out up till the last minute, and.
But that's still, meaning if you get it back, it's still not cost to the county?
It's not cost to the county.
That's actually the money that they're putting up, that you're giving back?
That's correct. It's, it's, there's no cost to the county, and the thing is, it's kind of like you can spend $100 to fix your car when it has a little problem, or you spend $10,000 when it runs off the road and wrecks. And FEMA looks at it that way. If we are constantly putting money into the community for flood after flood after flood, we had four federal declarations of disasters in Lincoln County in 2016, four declarations, and in every one of those disaster, FEMA had to come in here and have to spend money. Our office had to spend money that we didn't get reimbursement for. Every office in this county has to spend money that we didn't get reimbursement for. So if we can remove those structures out of the flood plain, it's going to save us money.
Alan, thank you for.
You're welcome.
Getting us all up to speed. Okay, so, do I have a motion to approve the new business as listed on the agenda?
Second.
Okay, my motion is second on paper, aye. My motion carries. Okay, that is all we have tonight, unless, do you guys have anything you want to say?
No, I just want to just mention what we talked about before, there's a project we're looking at, I'm looking at on the other side of the county, on my side of the county as far as doing the self-help water project, and I'll get those numbers together for the commission to come here. The only, the other, I have one question as far as, have we decided anything about what we're going to do about the church over there, as far as moving over there or not moving over there?
I said that last week, kind of jokingly, but the more I thought about it, it kind of makes sense.
The only, the only reason I was asking that is if we're, can we use courthouse facilities funds for that? I mean, you know, I was thinking if we're going to do something like that, we might want to make sure we get our projects and, you know, our requests and.
Well, it's October. You have to have it in by October, so we'll have to October to try to figure out the logistics of it if you want us to look into it. You know, we have talked and talked about what to do with that church, and, you know, moving the magistrates over, brought its own problems with, if the magistrates go, the records are here, and then you're going to have somebody to run records, and a bailiff, because the bailiff's upstairs and down here, so there was just all kinds of things.
And I know when we talked with Judge Salmons, too, he was a medical movement up there, but those, we also have to have another bailiff, or you have to have a bailiff over there and things of that nature, too, so that was one of the reasons, but he was, and like we mentioned, like we talked about before that, the increases where our footage would increase, what monies we'd get from the spring quarter for that.
But if, if we, if the commission office moves and the county clerk's office moves, it will free up this file room and four offices, so the magistrates can move down, anyone fix like a courtroom, and have plenty of space for all the magistrate stuff, which would open up their office for probation, and then it would leave our office if Ron wanted to use it and fix him an office over there separate from.
Well, I mean, I'm all for it, everybody wants to, I just think that if we're going to kind of settle on a plan, then like to make sure that we get our request for the money's in in October and things of that nature.
And we're kind of looking to see how much it's going to cost. I think it'll cost us, and then probably, compared to moving somebody else, it'll probably cost us the least for us to move over there.
Well, we don't have to, I just wonder a little bit, does it cause any problem if you move your, your stuff over there as far as people accessing it, or anyone in the courthouse needed access to it that you can think of, or? You just kind of think, I mean, it's just something.
And not a lot of it, I mean, the justifications every now and then, offering to build somebody else's vehicle.
You know.
I mean, it's not like they couldn't walk across the, there's not, there's not a lot of those.
Well, I just want to make sure you were okay with, you know, that you didn't say anything about it, because I don't.
Well, the only, the only thing that kind of pops into my mind is the weight of the records, that's, that's going to be on a second floor, you know, on top of the election center, which is already set up. And that, and that part would be good, and you wouldn't be running back and forth across the street, elections, you could go upstairs and, or upstairs, and it's, if that part works, I just wonder, you know, about the building being solid, but I mean, we're talking about a lot of weight in here.
Yeah, yeah.
Going there and pick up one of those books, you know, so that's my, that would be my own concern, something we might want to look into if we're going to maybe have somebody that knows something about that a little bit.
We could, we could kind of talk to somebody about doing that, get that note in, but, you know, we need to know that, that weight, which, you know, so.
Right, right.
If we can, one of us figure out, we have to take a look at it, I think, so. I would think it looks pretty well, I mean, from what I've seen.
Constructed, yeah.
Yeah, it does, but it does have a lot of open air, well, it has more, more support under it now that we put those rings in there now, so that would probably help it, too, but I just think if, you know, if that's the direction we want to go, we ought to start formulating what we're going to put, you know.
I don't think anybody really wants to move out of courthouse, but when you start looking at the big picture, that makes more sense than anything else.
Well, you can't move the assessor's office without moving the sheriff's office, I mean, it just.
Well, I think, you know, the only thing is when we originally bought the place, we were wanting to generate income, you know, to help pay for it and things of that nature, but then again, you're talking about if you don't do something over there, then you're going to have to do something here, and that means building things.
I'm really thinking if we can, if we keep, keep with the network that we're using, because we're doing a lot of stuff, you know, on computers now where we have, and there's a little bit of the tie with the assessor's office on, in that aspect, but if we can stay on the same network and they can access the digital record that we're bringing and recording as far as, as somebody bringing in a property transfer, they want to put their name on it, because that's even the taxes. I'm really thinking if we can make, keep, keep with the network that we're using, I mean, because we're, we're doing a lot of stuff around our computers now, where we have, and there's a little bit of a tie with the assessor's office on, in that aspect. Uh, but if we can stay on the same network and they can access the, the digital records that we're bringing and recording as, as far as, as there's somebody bringing in a, a property transfer, they want to put their name on it because that's even the taxes, and I'm just going to take care of that stuff, and they'll pull up the deed stuff all around now based on all of our network, instead of going across the hall and getting books. So if we could, you know, keep that network tight, I think we'll be, we'll get that over.
I'd be happy to help you engineer running fiber optics across the street from this building to that building so that you could tie into that network, and that would allow you to have the, the high-speed network that you already have here from the state without any additional costs. The only thing that I beg you to consider in this move is the Morgan County courthouse burned approximately ten years ago, and why they lost records, and realized that they lost records, that they didn't have a backup in Charleston. And if you lose something over there, the fire protection of that building doesn't have a working fire line system, and it doesn't have a sprinkler system, so it could be, it could be catastrophic if you don't look at the fire protection aspect of it if we would have something happen.
That's, that's true, but we, we do, uh, backup records that we keep offsite, and, and we have, uh, with the new software we're getting, that's going to be backed up offsite daily with, with what is di- what is digital right now. We still have, we still have a, a big backlog for.
That's what I was thinking with facilities grant doing that, because security one and, and fire protection, too, so.
Because that's how we pay for the fire protection in this courthouse, was through facilities grant, what, ten years ago?
Yeah, and there may be something, just some way to get help with that through, through records management grants, too, as far as protection. So maybe another aspect to look into.
All right, if nothing else, then I'll need a motion to adjourn to our next regular session on February seventh, two thousand nineteen. A motion, a second, all in favor, aye.